LeAndre, I'm going to make just a quick statement for a minute, and then we'll roll into what you're going to do. But it won't count against your time, so you're okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll call this to order. These are the City Council vacancy interviews occurring on March 26, 2012. We have a few council members absent this evening, coupled with personal issues. Of course, we have a vacant seat, and we have one council member who will not be here on April 2nd, when the vote is taken, and they didn't feel it was fair to be involved in the interviews if they weren't going to be voting on the position. To the best of our knowledge, this is the first time that these interviews have been done in public and taped to be shown, both on TV and on YouTube. So we're happy that we're engaging in that kind of process. What will happen here is that, once we introduce the respective candidate, they will have 30 minutes. That includes an opening and a closing, should they choose to use it, and a series of ten questions that will be asked, and will be asked of all candidates. So that's our process, and then it's our intention to vote, to name the replacement for Bob Fitzgerald on April 2nd. So our first interview is LeAndre Goldston. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You are on camera, and we would ask only that you speak into the microphone. The next 30 minutes are yours for an opening, a closing, and some questions from council.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and citizens of Aurora. As stated, my name is LeAndre Goldston. I am a citizen of Aurora. I live here with my wife and, so far, eight children. And we love the city. We are very interested and believe in active citizenship, so we stand up to fill this vacancy to augment the council and to bring fresh perspective to the leadership of our city. I thank you for your consideration and time, and I would only remind you that it's important that you vote for the very best person, because you are representing me, my family, and all of Aurora. Whether that is me or not, I urge you to do your due diligence and select the best leader. Thank you.
I'll start off with the first question, and then the other council members will ask as they want to go. It's a process question. What's your understanding of the relationship among the City Council, the appointees, and the general workforce of the city?
My understanding of the council, the employees, and the general—
The appointees.
The appointees, excuse me, and the general workforce. My understanding is that the City Council is very much the legislative body and leadership engine for the city. The employees help the council carry out what it is the council passes in accordance with the will of the people. As far as appointees, I assume you mean the CABC and then things like that.
I'll let me be clear. The city manager, the city attorney, the chief judge, and the judicial administrator. I'm sorry, that's my fault.
I just wanted to be clear. Certainly, my understanding is that the city manager is the chief executive officer of the city by charter. The mayor is our titular head and leader. These functions are carried out very much like federal departments, in which the person, be it the judge, be it the city manager, be it whomever, is responsible to the council for the carrying out of those duties.
Thank you. Next question. Who wants to go?
I'm sorry, Bo. It's all right. LeAndre, what do you see as the three most important issues that are currently facing our city?
Water, marketing, and public safety. We are going to expand. We're a fair-sized city. I believe we're third in the state and somewhere around 60th in the nation or so. We are going to expand. We have the land, too. We have the interests. We have a great city. So we must have water to feed our population as it grows. Public safety. I grew up in rural America. I still remember the police officer, they taught me how to cross the street properly and how to walk my bike across the sink. I want that for Aurora. I want that for my children. And, excuse me.
Would you like some water?
Yes, I'm sorry, I think that was—
We'll get it some. We'll get it.
That's—
It's all nice.
That's good. Thank you. I think these are the things we have to do. We have to work on as a city, so we can grow properly, so that we can attract not only people but industry and business to our city.
Can I do one quick follow-up?
Yes.
In the marketing aspect, what did you have in mind there?
Certainly. Aurora was named Sportstown USA a couple of years back, and I read recently that the world's largest competitions are coming here, but I don't hear enough about that. I don't hear enough about the good things that Aurora has to offer, be it sports, be it more sunshine than Miami Beach. We have a great story, and we could tell it a little better, I think, and that will help us all out.
Thank you. Councilmember Legere?
LeAndre, I'd like to ask you, if you're appointed, would you be able to distinguish between your strongly-held personal beliefs and the desires and needs of your constituents if they were in conflict?
Absolutely. I like to take a federalist approach. I believe that each echelon of government is coeval in its own sphere. That also means the echelon of government in my home is different from that of the city. Now, I have some closely-held moral beliefs. I do not deny that one iota. However, if I am appointed, I'm not being appointed archbishop. I'm being appointed to the City Council. So it would be my job to represent all interests and all businesses and all entities and citizens, whether or not I agree with them morally, but judging by our codes, our regulations, and the law.
Can you think of an example where you might run into a conflict between your personal beliefs and the role as a city councilman?
You know, not offhand. I really can't. I'd be willing to entertain anything that would be asked later or right now, but nothing really comes to mind at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Markert?
Thanks, and welcome, and thank you for your time. As you know, the city's council itself has roles. The mayor has a role. The at-large members have a role, and us ward people tend to be pretty clear in our roles as well. In my role, I think, the at-large people carry their weight on certain issues or certain causes. What if you filled this at-large vacancy? Would you see this binding your past experience and expertise to give you leadership in what arenas and what areas for the city? What would be your special interest in supporting the city?
I would have to go back to marketing principally. I really want the story of Aurora to be told. That's my number one, if you will. I heard a little bit about the relationship between at-large and ward members. If appointed, I think my role is more supportive to the wards. What can I do to help the individual wards? Because I've been around the council long enough to know that it's not the at-large person that's wanting to be called first from the neighbor's dog barking, and quite often the answer may be, did you talk to your ward representative? So my view, my thought on that relationship is first of support. I believe this council is a team, and together, each achieves more. That's the acronym. So I would approach things from that aspect, but I definitely want a champion market and ideas.
Thanks. Councilmember Hunter Holon?
Thank you for being here. Is there anything in your past that if publicly disclosed would be an embarrassment to yourself and the city?
No. Do I mean that I am perfect? Hardly. But I have no arrests, no things of that nature, nothing that I can think of that would be brought to the line would be embarrassing for the council.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you. Thanks for coming, and thanks for applying and for your time. As one member of an 11-member legislative body, what is your strong suit that you would bring to council in order to make it more cohesive and productive?
You know, I spent 10 years in the military, and one of the things that I learned is how to build a team. And this does go back to your question, Councilmember Markert. I know how to build a team. I know how to build consensus. Part of my job at Raytheon is to get people from different areas, sometimes different languages, different ideas, to progress towards a common set of goals. It's what I do every day. It's how I pay my mortgage. So that's my strong suit to the council, is really working together and listening first.
Let me follow up on that, if you don't mind. There are—this City Council, whether it's this year or any other year, is full of equals with strongly-held opinions, and some might even say strong egos. Team building is easier when there are people who are in different levels, if you will. How do you do that when everybody's at the same level?
Well, when everybody's at the same level, typically everybody was hired to do the same job, and that's not different with the City Council. What you have been hired to do, and I hope to be appointed to help with, is to advance our city, advance Aurora, to build Aurora properly, to make it stronger, to bring more opportunities to Aurora. I think that's the unifying tie, whether we have strong egos or not, and I would be one of them, I'm going to tell you upfront. Strong egos or not, we also have the same goal, and if we can't come together on that, then the people will let us know every two or four years.
Councilmember Berzens?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, LeAndre. As you know, we just went through a council-mayoral election cycle a few months ago, where we heard some of the people interviewing here tonight tell us their likes and criticisms about council's recent actions of economic development initiatives to help bring jobs to Aurora. And this is important to me, because I'm chairman of the Planning, Economic Development, and Redevelopment Policy Committee for the city. And whoever is appointed this seat will fill Bob Fitzgerald's seat. He sits on that committee. So can you tell us how you, as a new council member, would help lead us in planning, economic development, and redevelopment in Aurora? What ideas would you bring?
Well, the first thing I'm going to do is listen. I've found in organizations, there's nothing more annoying than the new guy that comes in and thinks that he or she knows everything. That's my strong suit. The second thing is, I do have ideas, though. I call it "City of." We say "City of Aurora." I want to change Aurora with trades, with excellence, with recreation, with education. I would like to see stronger partnerships with our junior colleges. We have an aerospace industry here. I believe we can augment them better. We have a huge medical industry here. We can work together with them. We have Veterans Affairs here. We have Buckley Air Force Base here in the military. Let's work along those lines. Let's develop the lines we have already economically. Again, if we begin to tell our story—I think Aurora's about 150 square miles, 75 or so of which are undeveloped—we have room, not just to grow for citizens, but we have room to grow for industry, to spot on these support mechanisms for our major engines. And I think that's a couple ways we can work together and increase our economic might and opportunity.
Councilmember Roth?
LeAndre, if you were appointed to fill this vacancy, what would be your intention in regard to reelection?
Winning. Sorry to be so blunt, but yes, I agree. If I'm appointed, I fully intend to run for this seat when it comes up again. You can't make any difference if you're just your day gone tomorrow. So if you appoint me, understand that I intend to be around for a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Please describe what benefits and advantages to the city would result from you being a member of Aurora City Council.
Well, I understand people, first and foremost. Like I said, I spent 10 years in the military. I've been all over the world. I've had to share a table, you know, and lockers with people who didn't agree with me, and from different backgrounds, and I understood that. I was also on the school advisory council for St. Reece School in northern Aurora here for about seven years. So I've worked with people who are rich, who are poor, who have different values, have different ideas on education. I've been able to work with and alongside the citizens of the city. And I believe that that is a perspective that is very valuable on the City Council, and that's what I bring from it. The other thing is, I see the city as a family. Like I mentioned before, I'm a family man, and I like the feel of Aurora. When I first came here, I said, this is either the biggest small town or the smallest big city there is. And I like that balance. I don't want to be New York City, but I don't want to be Gila Bandera, as I know. I think Aurora is going on a great path, and I just want to help.
Thank you. I'll follow up on that a little bit. In your description of smallest big city or the biggest small town, and I'm not looking for a firm answer from you, but there's been a lot of discussion about spending a great deal of time, particularly as Councilmember Roth identifies it, making Aurora a sister city and not a second city. Isn't that what you're saying? I was correct. Do you have any thoughts on how, or whether or not you agree with that, and if you do, how do you think you could help to bring that about?
I do agree with that. I like to call it another jewel in the crown of the Rockies, is the way I say Aurora, but sister city will work just fine. Well, one of the ways I believe I can help is to really bring out Aurora's identity. I go back to marketing. It's telling our story. We're not just the bedroom committee, community of Denver, or anywhere else. We have our own character, our own feel, and it's a great city. I believe by speaking on this and sharing this with the whole state, frankly, the idea of the sister city v. the second city, it will come naturally, because we will be known for who and what we are, v. who and what anybody else is more of.
I have a question. Describe for us what you've personally done to be involved in the city, and what you think you would work on first to try to improve the community, whether or not you are appointed.
Certainly. I have served on two commissions. One, in its very room, it was a blue ribbon panel on infrastructure and future governance. I took that very seriously. In fact, I still revisit some of the ideas periodically in my mind. I think, again, Aurora is a great city. I think that we're doing some really good things, and I admire the fact that council had the courage to not only look to the future, but put that look into the hands of the citizens. I've also served on the CABC as a member, and was vice-chairman of the CABC, I think, in 2006. I'm interested. I'm vested. And again, I've worked with the community. I've been on various school boards, private schools, that's where my children went. What I'd like to do and how I'd like to help the city is just bringing my perspective, my ability to work with everybody.
Me add one that was on our list that I hadn't planned on asking, but I think it's important to tie in with all of this. Given what you're currently doing, your current commitment, business obligations, would that permit you to dedicate the considerable amount of time necessary to perform your duties as a council member, including evening meetings and numerous functions every weekend? How does that work in your life?
Well, believe it or not, my life has been simplified quite a bit. At one time, I coached a basketball team. I went to college full-time. I worked full-time and managed to help out on a couple of campaigns. Currently, I work. So I have, in my mind, a budget of 40 to 60 hours per month. Now, that can go either way. I do have the latitude to do that. I have some—have greater control of my schedule now at work than I did before, so I don't see that as being an issue. I've had a traveling gig before, in addition to my full-time job, and this one would only require me to serve the people of Aurora. So weekends, evenings, that's not a problem.
If you were appointed, you would, I think, find out that various members of council, whether they are at-large or in-ward, have different areas of interest that—or background, or both—that they tend to bring forward, so that the rest of council can benefit from that interest and that background. Issue areas is what I'm talking about more than anything else. If you were to be on council, what do you think would be that issue area for you?
Veterans Affairs, I can say unreservedly. I'm very interested in, A, how veterans are treated, especially at this time of the war as they return, and I'm happy to see that Aurora's taking a greater role in the VA. I'm very pleased to see that. That would be the thing that really gets me going, if you will. That would be my special project.
Do any members of council have any other questions that they'd like to ask at this You have plenty of time, about six minutes if you want to use it. You don't have to, but certainly if there's anything that you'd like to add, any kind of closing statement, anything that you'd like to leave with us, we'd love to hear it.
Well, I don't think I'll use six minutes, but I would like to thank the members, the ones that aren't here as well, for your leadership and your stewardship of the city. It is greatly appreciated, and it is personal to me, like I said, raising my children here. You work for me daily, and I appreciate that, all of your points of view. Again, I've applied to fill this vacancy to bring my perspective and abilities and experience to this council. I hope that you would accept me as a colleague, and I would appreciate the vote and support. But moreover, I want you to choose the best candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good.
Sorry about the waters.
Not at all.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for helping, yes. You guys are tired of me.
Look, David's familiar.
Bob?
I do miss him.
Bob? How are you? How are you? Good, sir.
Okay, Mr. Ninjas, a couple things for you before we start. We're being taped, so the camera is on you most of the time, so you need to know that.
Okay.
Secondly, obviously, we're missing some people tonight.
Right.
We have the vacancy. Bob Roome is not going to be at the meeting on the 2nd, so he didn't think it was fair to participate in the interviews and not vote on who gets appointed. And then councilmembers Peterson and Clullin had some personal issues tonight and couldn't be here, so you get the seven of us, the leftovers. We will devote a half an hour, and in that time, you can provide any opening statement you would like. We will then ask about a dozen questions, and then, assuming there's time, based on your answers, you also have the opportunity to provide a closing statement. So that'll be the process, and since I get to be the timer, too, and I see we're coming up on it, that'll be it. So you have the next half hour. Please give us any opening statement you'd like to make.
Well, I'm back again. Hopefully, you guys aren't tired of me. This is the second time that I've applied for a vacancy. Obviously, I've run three campaigns as well unsuccessfully, but, you know, every one of them's been a learning experience. I think I could be a consultant now. I don't know about winning, but I could definitely be a consultant as far as running City Council campaigns. Really, the reason I'm here again is an incredible opportunity. I have a deep desire to serve. I can't help it. I'm wired that way. You know, as you know, I was a firefighter for the city for 23 years. I'm a small business owner. My family and I own a plate restaurant on East Colfax Avenue. It was established there in 1974. We've been heavily involved in the community, and, you know, I want to—I'm applying for this vacancy, because I think I can bring a lot of experience, a lot of good ideas, and knowing—working on one side of government as a civil servant, as a firefighter, and being a small business owner and dealing with all the codes and things that we have to deal with on a daily basis, I just think that it's a lot of experience that might be beneficial to this council, and I hope you guys see that as well. So really, with that, if there's any quest—I'm sure you have questions of me, so I'm ready.
We do.
I hope.
I'll ask the first one, and it, in a sense, follows up on your opening. But describe for us what you think you've personally done to participate in and improve Aurora.
Oh, God, it stems back to when we were doing Fletcher Plaza. They wanted to just leave the concrete, plain old concrete color. We fought to get it red. Before the library was there, the city building was there, when we bought the restaurants. The city building was there. It moved out six months later, and then it became vacant, and we were with the businesses along our side of Colfax that fought to get that building cleared, and obviously, that was the Marthel King Library. While working on public-private partnership, when I was a firefighter, the ambulance contract that we have now, obviously, it's changed, but, you know, I was initially part of that task force. I was on the blue ribbon panel for the government infrastructure, which Councilmember Legere was also, so, I mean, I'm Aurora. It's all about—I love Aurora.
Thank you. Councilmember Roth?
Alfonso, first of all, thank you for being here. We know it's taking time out of your schedule. What do you think are the three most important issues facing the city today?
Believe it or not, I think you're addressing a lot of them. I was having a conversation with Councilmember Legere when you guys had the business roundtable, and some of the things that I stressed, because when I expanded my business, I went through the building process and went through all the rules and ordinances as far as remodeling a building, and I thought that they were a bit cumbersome and they were—it wasn't as customer service friendly as it could be. So I know you guys are working on that. I think that's one of the things. Obviously, everyone always talks about jobs, but I think the economy's getting a little bit better right now. Not much, but a little bit better, but I can feel it in my sales and in my daily operations of my business. But, you know, I think we really have to, or I think it would be wise to really look at business retention. at business retention, because I think the business is eventually going to come with what we have developing in Aurora. And actually, I think the library is key to that, finishing it out, build out all the way to Peoria.
Thank you. Is that your third item, or were you just saying that as a tie?
That was my third item, yeah, just to tie it all together, because obviously, that's going to generate revenue for us.
Okay. Councilmember Legere?
Yes, Alfonso, if appointed, would you be able to distinguish between your strongly held personal beliefs and the needs and desires of the, of your constituents if you were appointed? And can you think of an example where your, your personal beliefs might conflict with your role as a councilman?
Are you referring to, like, my career as a firefighter or something like that, or to?
It's, this is generic for everybody.
Just generic?
Oh, okay. I can just, for you, but that could be an example.
You know, I mean, that's a great example, obviously, because, you know, I was heavily involved with firefighters when I was here as a firefighter. You know, the bottom line is we work for the people of Aurora, and that's paramount, and that's what means number one to me. Really, everything else is secondary, so I would not have a problem.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hunter Olin?
Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for being here. Is there anything in your past that was publicly disclosed would be an embarrassment to yourself or the city council, or city of March?
Probably that I've never won a race yet. I said yet.
Yeah, we can forget it, the mill's in.
No, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you for being here, for your time. As one member of an eleven-member legislative body, what do you think your strongest skill would be to make this council even more cohesive and productive than it is now?
You know, I think you guys are in the right direction with Mayor Hogan. I've known him for quite a few years. I think my, my strongest asset is bringing people together. I've really been good at that my entire career in whatever I did. You know, being involved as a board member for the Colorado Restaurant Association and being on various boards around the city. I'm also board director for the Chamber of Commerce. I just, that's just something that I do really, really well and experience. I have tons of experience, small business experience. I live it every day.
Councilmember Mark?
Thanks, thanks for being here. I need to follow up on Councilmember Miller's question. As ward people, we are the first ones to know when the dogs are barking and when there's a problem in our ward. At-large people have a different role, not necessarily by charter, but by practicality. What would you contribute as an at-large member? What would you champion? What would be your issues? What would be the causes that would, that you would pick up and carry your weight on for us as far as part of this team and this group?
I could definitely help Councilmember Miller in North Aurora with so many Latinos in the community, but, you know, having a business in North Aurora, living in South Aurora, obviously, my commute every day is driving through the city, so I have a good grasp of, of the issues in really both parts of the city. So I think that I could...
If I could, are there specific topics or interests? You know, we've got light rail, we've got airport noise, we've got, you know, every agenda is full of the list this long of things that were...
For Ward Four, I mean, definitely with the...
No, I mean, as an at-large person...
As an at-large person?
What would you pick up and do? What would be your...
You know, I would probably, I would probably, if, if given the opportunity and I was, I was the council member to fill the vacancy, I would come to the ward people if there was any way I could help in any situations that you might need help or, you know, things like that. Prime example that I think of is there's a little business down the street from us that was having some road problems that they could never get repaired. Councilmember Miller stepped in, and it was the gentleman that has a little crush on the vocals. He spent years trying to get that done. I mean, there's something here that I obviously could have helped because I've known him for years. You know, things like that, you know, being a staple in the community, and, you know, I'm familiar with a lot of people.
Describe your understanding of how the Aurora system works, if you will. You know, we have council, we have the mayor, we have the appointees, we have the employees at-large. What's your understanding of the relationships among all of those groups?
Basically, the city council members, their responsibility, is the way I look at it in my eyes, is to set policy, and the city management is, is, it's their job to, to step, move the policy forward that has been set by the council, and then it's the employees and the staff and everybody else in the city to make sure that it gets done.
Do you think it's your job to interfere with the employees doing their work?
No, I don't know. That's, that's up to the department heads and that's up to the city manager. My job is to answer constituents' complaints, to answer any concerns that citizens might have within the city, and if in the position of a council member, to bring that to the rest of the council.
Councilmember Roth?
As you know, this appointment position is for balance of the term, so it's a year and a half, year plus. What would be your intentions if you were appointed regarding reelection?
Oh, I'd run for reelection. I told you I'm getting pretty good at it. I mean, it's an incredible opportunity, what an opportunity to be able to have that time to learn, you know, to learn, to learn more about the government, about the world of government, and then to be able to actually digest the policies and the procedures, and then be able to run a campaign where you're really an insider, you're not somebody on the outside trying to get in.
Councilmember Burris?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Alfonso, as you know, we just went through a council mayoral election a few months ago, and we heard from some of the people that are interviewing here tonight tell us their likes and their criticism about council's recent actions on economic development initiatives to help bring jobs into Aurora. As the chair, excuse me, as the chair of the Planning, Economic Development, and Redevelopment Policy Committee, you, I am the chair, you would be replacing, or the person who did this appointment, would be replacing Bob Fitzgerald, who sits on that committee. Now, can you tell us how you, as a new council member, would help lead us in planning the economic development and redevelopment in Aurora? What ideas would you bring to that committee?
Well, obviously, you would look at whatever packages the Economic Development Council is bringing to us. Every one of them is going to be unique to themselves. Definitely, the business experience, being able to relate to somebody across from the table that also is in business as well, and, you know, working, working as hard as I can to, to make sure we, we put forth a good project that's going to benefit the people of Aurora.
Please describe what benefits and advantages to the city would result from you being a member of the council?
Well, I think that I bring a lot of experience. Like I said, I bring hopefully good ideas, and I bring a work ethic that is second to none. You know, I don't, I don't, I really can't put an hour or how much time I would be involved in whatever it's going to take to get the job done. You know, really, it's, I wouldn't even look at it as time punching in a clock. It would be just however much time it gets to get the job done. Really, those are the things that, and being able to bring people together and listening, understanding, you know, because part of learning is listening. Listening is very important, especially if you're, if you're dealing with people on the business level or even on the daily level, really, it's part of communicating.
Councilmember Mark?
Thanks. Do you have a particular area of interest in municipal government, an activity that you would like to focus on and become a resource for the rest of council?
I think retail, because I can really relate to it, or, you know, the business part of it. You know, being on the business committees that I'm on now, understanding the issues that affect them on a daily basis so we can generate more revenue for our city.
Thank you.
Getting back to your involvement question, or the time question, if you will, your answer, or your answer rather than the question. Do you have any impediments to doing the job as is required? You know, council meetings on Monday nights, committee meetings, special study sessions, workshops, et cetera, et cetera. Do you, do you see any problems that become time impediments for you?
Not at all. Owning my own business, I'll be able to adjust my schedule, and I have a great staff, so I'll be able to adjust my hours however I can. There's one, my mother is ill, but, you know, that's, I don't consider that a job. We have to take care of our parents, period, so, but not at all. I can adjust my schedule to whatever needs to be done.
Anyone else have any questions at this time?
Alfonso, I just wanted to go back and expand on the question that I asked earlier about strongly held personal beliefs. And, you know, I wanted to just draw an example. You know, your, your background as a firefighter, you were, as you know, very involved in the firefighter union, and I can remember working on issues at that, at that time.
You were heated sometimes.
No, we actually got along pretty good.
Just kidding.
My question is, if, so, you know, obviously, or at least to me, it seems obvious that you have strongly, you know, strong feelings about the union and what they do, and if there were, if there were an effort to, you know, say, the Public Works Department, Streets Department, and all the other departments decided they wanted to form a union, and maybe Charlie's going to shoot me for asking this question.
He's wiggling, I'm watching.
I'm wondering, is that, is that a good example? You know, is that an example of, you know, where a conflict might occur?
Not really, because I haven't belonged to a union for eleven years. Again, as a council member, my responsibility, who I answer to, to the people of Aurora, period. My involvement when I was a firefighter, obviously, I was in the union, most firefighters are, but really, I think what made me successful in that position was because I was also a businessman. And really, I mean, wouldn't it be great to have somebody on city council that has negotiated contracts, that understands negotiations, that has the education and the background to negotiate those contracts? I really think it would be in addition to the city council. If the city employees, to answer your question, because I don't, I try to answer people's questions, if the city employees want to organize a union, that's completely up to them. I have no part of that. My responsibility is to the citizens of Aurora, period.
Any other questions at this time? Do you have a, any kind of a closing that you'd like to leave with us?
Just...
Plenty of time for it, so whatever you want to say or do, cheers up.
Just thank you again for the opportunity. Obviously, you all of you know that I'm serious about this, because all of you have run campaigns, you know how hard it is, and how much of your heart and soul goes into it. So, you know, to be here again and not, having been victorious three times, I think is a pretty big statement on how important the city is to me. So I hope that all of you will take that into consideration, and please, during the period of time, excuse me, where, where if you have any questions, you know, about, that you have of me for your, you know, to make your decision, please call me. Please call me. I'll be more than happy to, to answer on anything that I wasn't clear on today, or any, any other future issues that you might have. So with that, again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have your Facebook password. Just kidding. Facebook is dangerous.
Hey, I'm just recommending you to somebody.
Brad? Is that a fresh cup of water for Brad?
Somebody's got the job of giving the water, fresh water.
Yep, yep.
Wait a minute, why is there lipstick on it?
All right.
Wasn't Alfonso before me?
With lipstick? No, it's a fresh cup.
Hi, Mr. Pierce. Feels odd calling you that, but hey. We are, of course, filming this, so if you can give your answers into the microphone, that would be great. As you can see, we're missing some council members this evening. We have two who had personal situations come up, couldn't be here. Of course, we have the vacancy, and then we have Bob Broome, who will not be here on the second and didn't feel it was appropriate to participate in the interviews if he wasn't going to vote on, on the appointment. So that's why we are a little shorthanded today. What we will do is give you a half an hour. That will include an opening, questions, and a closing. It's up to you how long, how many minutes of that half-hour you take. So I think that's about it. So why don't we begin and give us any opening statement that you'd like to make?
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for selecting me as one of the finalists on the application process for city council. I appreciate the opportunity to interview with you all. The way I look at this is that, and I've said this before, but I want to say it again, that very few people get the opportunity to serve as an elected official. And so when I was on my eight years of city council, I got to serve the people and the businesses of Aurora, and I really liked my job. I, you know, and you do too. I'm sure you wouldn't be here if you didn't like it. So I served my eight years. Unfortunately, I didn't get reelected, but I want to serve again to come, to continue that commitment and dedication to the, to the people of Aurora, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm applying. I think that you all have a very serious and large obligation to select the best candidate, or best applicant, I should say. Now, with me, you get no learning curve, because I just left office in November. I keep up with what you all are doing with, as far as the backup is concerned, and agendas, and the council policy committee, so I'm pretty much up to speed on what's going on. I am still involved with the visitor Aurora, the economic development folks, the Centennial Airport Noise Roundtable, and so I'm, you know, still involved in the community, even though I'm not on city council anymore. I have the ability and the experience to run a citywide campaign. I've done it three times, so if you think ahead to 2013, who's, who has the ability and the knowledge on how to run a citywide campaign? And I've won two times. I, my, my job, my paralegal job is flexible during the daytime. I can leave in the middle of the day to go to city council events and boards and outside boards and stuff that everybody belongs to. And I was listening the other night when you were talking about Bob Fitzgerald's three boards that he had sat on, and I thought, well, if I ever get appointed again, I could, I'd have the ability and the time to go sit on the boards that he was sitting on. You read my preferences there, Sue Sanstrom, you all know, Peggy Lehman, Denver City Council. Molly and I worked with her down around the Dayton Line Rail Station for a long, it took a long time to get it done, but we got it done down there at the Dayton Line Rail Station. And then Keith Gardner, the Centennial City Council Member who serves with me on the Centennial Airport, the Noise Roundtable. So that's kind of my opening statement, so there you go.
And we're asking the same questions of all, all of the candidates, and you've addressed some of it, but certainly, it doesn't help to go over it again. So... So give us your understanding of the relationship among the city council members, city manager, and the other appointees, and the general workforce of the city. Talk about your view of that relationship.
Yeah, city councils, policymakers. People just think you all sit up there on Monday nights and push the buttons, but, you know, you all set the policy. The budget documents a policy statement, and so it's kind of the overreaching direction of the city, the goals and objectives that you all have come up with, kind of the 30,000-foot view or even higher. And then the city manager, of course, is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. And I have been real adamant about trying to not, you get into this question of directing staff or not directing staff on a city council perspective, and so I've been trying to, when I was there, be real careful about not directing staff, because I think that's a, you know, that could be an issue if city council members start doing that. So city manager runs the city, and the, you know, appointees, city attorney, presiding judge, same kind of a thing, run their departments on a day-to-day basis.
Councilmember Legere.
Brad, if you were appointed, would you be able to distinguish between your strongly held personal beliefs and the needs and desires of the constituents in the city? And can you think of an example where your personal beliefs might have gotten in conflict in the past?
I don't know if gotten in conflict. I think back to both of the occasions where we're dealing with restricted breeds, the first ordinance that came through, and then we revised it again a little bit to reduce the number of restricted breeds. So you heard from a lot of, I don't know if a lot is the right word, but some very vocal people on the restricted breed side. And my, you know, my personal belief was that you needed to do something with restricted breeds, and so that's why I supported it. You know, it was, I think, a lot of times, the citizenry or the folks who are in favor of something don't really take the time to comment to city council. It's kind of the human nature to always comment on something negatively, so you heard from a lot of people on the negative side of the restricted breed. So I tried to think about what's best for the city, taking their comments into consideration, but also deciding, you know, to support those, both of those ordinances.
Thank you. Councilmember Roth.
Brad, first of all, thanks for coming in. We know that you have other things in your life other than this. What do you think are the three most important issues that are currently...
I think the budget is one of them, the structural budget gap, I guess we call it, where, you know, our expenses are rising faster than our revenue, the rate of expenses and the rate of revenue are not. Expenses are rising, what I'm trying to say, the expenses are rising at a rate faster than the rate of income. So that's a structural budget problem that I see. One of them. The second one would be transportation, and you're talking about doing a mill levy increase or mill levy, continuing the mill levy for transportation. And so going out the Sixth Avenue towards E-470, I think is a good thing to get that all taken care of. The other transportation issue that we have is fast tracks. We got to get 225 light rail built somehow, whether it's through the private unsolicited proposal that some companies put into RTD, or somehow getting a vote to get another tax increase. Unfortunately, that's what it's going to have to take. If we want to see it in our lifetime, we're going to have to pay for it. And then the third one, you know, just trying to promote the city. I've always been, my positively Pierce slogan continues on, I mean, I want to make sure that we get recognized, and we do a pretty good job of it, of the things that we get, the awards that, you know, the Wemmlinger and Griswold plants got awards for the water and, you know, stuff like that. We need to keep on promoting as much as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Sure.
As one member of an 11-member legislative body, what strengths and skills would you bring to make this a more cohesive and productive organization than it already is? Council, I should say.
Yeah, yeah. I, the way I kind of did it when I was there, I tried to work kind of behind the scenes. So if I'm trying to do something, you know, I'll go talk to individual council members ahead of time, especially before a Monday night council meeting, so there's no surprises. And I tried to work it the same way with Mayor Towers. So if there was something I was thinking about or was going to do, I'd always run it by Mayor Towers first, and then anything that needs council approval, trying to work it kind of on an individual basis until I got what I wanted, support-wise or whatever it may be. So I think working together, I think we have a pretty good, you all, when I was there, and I hate to say, "when I was there" or "when I hoped to be there," but I, we have a pretty good group. You know, we all get along, we have our differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we, you know, we go down this path of what's best for the city, and I think that's what it's all about.
I especially like that part about checking with the mayor first.
Councilmember Mark.
Thanks, kind of to follow on Councilmember Miller's question. You know, the roles are kind of not formally described, but the mayor has the job to do, us ward people have jobs to do, and you, as an at-large member, have a job to do. What would you take on as your challenges as in an at-large role on behalf of sort of carrying the weight for the whole city?
Yeah. I had started this National League of Cities Prescription Discount Drug Program, and we only have, and I've been working with Kim on this this whole time. I think a very low participation in that program, so I would like to, if I get fortunate enough to be reappointed or appointed, to continue that program and ramp it up. I mean, there's some big-time savings that we could provide to our citizens through that discount drug program. The other one that I started, and I admit it kind of fell by the wayside, I started this National Bike Registry. So if you go buy a bike in Aurora, you can purchase at Treds for $10, a registration. You register your bike with National Bike Registry. Part of the $10 Treds gets, the bicycle shop, the rest of the money that we get as a city, and it's going towards bike lanes and bike paths. So that's something I really wanted to reinvigorate and get going again. And transportation is always a big thing, just trying to, you know, you think about all the transportation, you know, I already mentioned fast tracks and the Sixth Avenue out to E-470, but you've got, our arterials and our residential streets still need a lot of work. I mean, we've cut the budget so bad on Public Works, we can't keep up with what we need to do on streets. So I want to figure out a way if we can do it to help get some more funding for Public Works.
Councilmember Hunter, hold on.
Brad, thanks for being here. Is there anything in your past that if publicly disclosed would be an embarrassment to yourself or city council?
Not that I can think of, unless somebody, no, not that I can think of. I'm not going to even go there.
You want to ask the Facebook question? No. Facebook password.
Thank goodness Charlie ruled him out of order.
Well, if you do look at it, there's not much there, but I do have a Facebook page, but it's pretty bare.
Brad, how would you describe what you have personally done to participate in and improve the community?
I mentioned it a couple of times, well, with this NLC prescription drug program and the National Bike Registry thing, so that helps, you know, citizens on their prescriptions and with their bikes. It's, the National Bike Registry is all about, if your bike were to get stolen, there's an easy way, and you can get it back, hopefully quicker than not, if you didn't have that. You know, and one of the responses to your question is about responding to citizens. I mean, I took personal pride in responding to almost every citizen that called or emailed me about something, whether it was, oh, God, I don't know, just pick it. You can go down the list of all these things, and, you know, I really take pride in reaching out and responding to citizen complaints or compliments, you know, too. So if you get the occasional compliment, you, I, you know, say, "Fine, thank you very much," or if it's a complaint, "See what I can do to fix it." And a lot of that's directing the city manager to help me, you know, help me solve the problem.
Councilmember Roth.
As you know, if you were selected to fill the seat, it's just for the balance of the term. So I'm curious, if you were appointed to this vacancy, what would be your intentions for running for reelection?
I would run in November 2013, or actually, a year, about a year from now. I'd be ramping up my campaign team again and running a at-large campaign like I've done before, and so I'm all ready to do that in the event I get the appointment.
Thank you. Councilmember Burris.
Thanks for being here. Sorry. As you know, Brad, we just went through a council and mayoral election cycle a few months ago, and we heard from some of the people actually interviewing here tonight tell us their likes and their criticisms about council's recent actions on economic development initiatives to help bring jobs to Aurora. And as the chair of the Planning Economic Development and Redevelopment Policy Committee, the appointee would replace Bob Fitzgerald's seat on that policy committee. Now, can you tell us how you, if you're appointed as a new council member, would help us lead in that committee in planning and P E D R in Aurora, and what ideas would you bring?
To the P E D R committee, first of all, when you talk about economic development, you know, some of the projects that have happened since I've been off council, plus some of the ones that we all dealt with when I was there, you know, I'm a pretty strong supporter of economic development, so if you're going to incentivize some company, I look at it as, but for the incentive, they wouldn't come here. So if you're not going to incentivize them, they're not going to come here, so therefore you get zero jobs, you get zero revenue off those jobs. So if you can incentivize them a little bit, and a couple of examples was the Niagara Water thing that happened since I've been gone, and the Prime Star Solar, you know, I think those are adequate or justifiable incentives to give those companies. As far as P E D R is concerned, some of the topics we talked about when I was on it before was renewable energy and how we, for example, let people put up wind turbines in the residential backyards, and this whole renewable energy thing, and I got to agree with Bob when you mentioned it the other night on Prime Star, renewable energy has got to be a lot cheaper for people to afford. I mean, it's nice to say we're going to do all this renewable energy stuff, but I think the incentive is on one kind of category, but when you start making people get solar or get wind or get geothermal, when it's more expensive than regular energy, that's where it kind of comes into play. So I think renewable energy is one that we talk about, P E D R, the alley paving, you know, how you have to join up your driveway to the new alley paving is an issue, and I don't know what I would have done if I'd have been there at that time, but we discussed it when I was there previously. But, you know, in building standards, there was a movement, kind of, I think, at one point for some adjustments to the masonry standards that we have on residential, and I don't know where that stands, but I would be careful when it comes to start modifying that masonry requirement that we've had for so many years.
Councilmember Hunter, hold on.
Please describe what benefits and advantages to the city would result from you being a member of city council.
Well, benefits would be you get a city council member who's responsive to the constituents. I mean, people elect people to serve on city council or whatever the elected office is, and you want somebody, and I think I fit that description of responsive to the citizenry. If, it's kind of a group effort in a way. I mean, if we're going to talk about goals and objectives or the budget as a whole, you kind of have to do that as a group. And so it's kind of a team effort trying to, you know, move the city along in the direction we think is best, and so I just think that working as, on city council gives that, gives that advantage, I guess, in trying to, the city, and it's, you know, it's moving in the right direction, just to continue that movement in the right direction.
Thank you.
Anything up with your day job? I know you mentioned that you're available during the day, but the question says, describe your current commitments and business obligations, and whether they would permit you to dedicate the considerable amount of time necessary to perform your duties as a council, including evening meetings such as now and endless functions every weekend.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, my paralegal job, I've got my paralegal business, I'm a small business owner, as I mentioned in my resume, so I work at this law firm, I only get paid for what I bill. So if I bill two hours a day, that's all I get paid. So if I'm off doing city council work in the daytime, that's my choice, and I, you know, it's something I want to do if I get appointed, is to continue this service outside of city council, or, you know, inside city council and outside city council. So, you know, I have no problem taking off in the middle of the day, and they're fine with it, too. That's the best advantage I have with that law firm, is that they let me take off and go to things in the middle of the day, and they're fine with that.
Fortunate. Thank you. Thank you. And I guess I'm supposed to also ask, I mean, you've told us a lot about what you have done and would continue to do. Pick a particular area of municipal government activity that you would focus on and become a resource for in this area for the rest of us on council.
I think, based on my private sector experience in oil and gas and service as a city council member, I think I can provide a whole bunch of knowledge on oil and gas, because fracking is coming, whether if or when. We don't know when or what or how, but I think it's going to be here sometime, and so I think I have that unique perspective of oil and gas and service on a city council.
Are there other questions that you'd like to ask? You zoomed right through. But you have time for any other comments you want to make?
Yep, I have a few comments. I just have to refer to my notes, so I make sure I get everything in. One of the things I think I may have mentioned in my resume, or maybe not, but this National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Steering Committee, and I know Barb's on public safety now, and so when I was on the E and R committee, I was proud of the fact that I got a, I call it a pine beetle resolution passed through the committee and to the National League of Cities Board. And so the pine beetle resolution was about what the federal government can help us with our water supply in case we have a big fire, something happens with our pine beetle infestation up there. So I was really happy that I was able to get that resolution passed through the NLC Board. You know, I was thinking about some of the long-term projects that were talked about last year, and you all are continuing to talk about this year, and I think I have pretty well up to speed on these, and so those would include the mill levy extension, the Wise Partnership, the city and county discussion, the fracking issue, and the Gaylord. So all those things that were discussed and will continue to be discussed probably a long time in the future, so I think I'm pretty well up to speed on those. And again, thank you for the opportunity, and I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to vote for me in a week from tonight, so I appreciate if you could see your way through to put me back on city council, because I liked what I do when I was there.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
I want you to know the forecast is a thunder.
How you doing? Thank you. Good to see you. How are you? Breakfasters. Stay inside during days like that. It's good to hear you don't have windows. Oh, I'm on the beach. I hope you have your hats on when you go outside. The wind is really strong.
That's, yeah, setting off the allergies.
Oh, yeah, that's not good.
Okay.
I did. I'm down by where they're evacuating. They're evacuating, I came from the Columbine area, and they're evacuating the houses, housing areas due to fire.
Well, what we're doing, a couple of things. First, obviously, we're missing some council members. We have the vacancy. Councilmember Broom is not here, because he's also not going to be here on the second when we would vote, so he didn't think it would be fair to be involved with the interviews. And Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Clolland... involved with the interviews, and Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Clolland had conflicts come up, and they just couldn't be here. We are taping, so you're on camera, more than we are. We will spend the next half hour, give you an opportunity for an opening statement, there will be questions, and then there's an opportunity for a closing statement. So you can take as much or as little of that time as you would like, and that's where we are. So, I will note our starting point and ask you the first question.
Great.
All right. How would you describe what you've personally?
I'm sorry, does she get an opening statement?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, opening statement, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to thank you for the opportunity that I can be with you tonight, and I'm here because I love Aurora. And I moved to Aurora from Denver in 1990, although when we used to drive our children out here, I thought that we came to Timbuctoo or Kansas, and I didn't, it seemed so very far away. I came to Aurora first, actually, I think many of you know I came on a large church staff of about 10,000 members, and I spent years serving people, and then got involved in affordable housing, and when the Lowry redevelopment project took place, I began to work with affordable housing, trying to help people in need, got involved with K C R T in Aurora. I spent New Year's Eve, moving into the year of 2000, sitting with Aurora police officers and Aurora firefighters answering telephones, screening calls for citizens that were concerned that our microwaves would blow up and different things would happen. But in, in my love for Aurora and raising my children here and having grandchildren here in our school districts, I think Aurora is one of the most incredible cities. You have done so many wonderful things. In my years in the legislature, I watched how Aurora had the foresight with water and what you did with water and to make a plan for the future. I want to be a part of what I think is greatness. I'm not coming here because I think there's problems, I think there's greatness, and I would like the opportunity to speak into the future of that greatness, to make sure that our school districts continue to be great for our kids, and I know that the part, the role you play doesn't always affect that, but I know that it does affect it in a great way. And I would like the opportunity to help the underserved in our community that have needs, and I'd like the opportunity to help advance the future for my grandkids, your grandkids, making sure that education and other opportunities are, are sustainable as well as housing and water and all that we need. So I love Aurora, that's why I'm here.
Great. Again, I'll ask the first question, and it will expand a little bit upon what you've already said, so it gives you an opportunity to say a little bit more, but how would you describe what you've personally done to, to participate in and improve the community?
Well, I've been an activist. I have worked with those who are underserved. I currently am a part of bringing a medical mobile van out to those who don't have health care. I, every month, reach out to those who are in need through the Aurora Community of Faith. I've been a part of the Thanksgiving outreach, a part of bringing coats, different services. I've also served in many grant funding opportunities, was actually able to retain the funding for Aurora Youth Options, which was a program that started in Aurora. I think Councilwoman Markert actually was one of the brain childs on that project. And in my role with the state, on the statewide strategic use fund, I was able to bring several hundred thousand dollars into Aurora, just sitting on that fund. I've been able, from a charitable perspective, as an auctioneer, I have raised over a million dollars for charity since 2001, and much of that has been raised in Aurora. And I've been able to help the symphony, I've helped the Fox Theater, done things for many groups in Aurora. I, I just consider Aurora my family. Can I, can I, can I piggyback one more thing? I've voted a lot as a state representative for different legislative issues that have been very important for Aurora, and I've really been supportive of the progress that Aurora has made, and, and was very supportive of the Fitzsimmons redevelopment project, and served on the Health and Human Services Committee, and I was an active part of the funding for the university hospital, and was in there in a hard hat when they were doing the development and had an opportunity to vote all along the way. So in my eight years in the legislature, I, I really tried to make Aurora a priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Roth.
First of all, thanks for being here, taking time out of your day. What do you see as the three most important issues currently facing Aurora?
I want to make sure our kids have every opportunity that they need to have the supports that they need, not only with our education system, but making sure through our recreation centers, through our libraries, through other opportunities, that we have the kind of supports and resources. I'd like to see even a greater mentoring opportunity for our youth, maybe tying it to the Aurora Chamber of Commerce and to, through the youth program with Aurora City Council, and making sure, or our youth commission, making sure that we give our kids every opportunity that we can for a strong future. I think another priority is making sure we sustain our water for the future, and I truly believe that, again, that Aurora is a leader. I have had, I've taken the water tour, and I have incredible respect for what Aurora has done, and I think we need to be very proud of what Aurora has done. I also want to make sure that as we look at our transportation and we look at the development in the future, that our roads and our transportation system is also sustainable to the growth that Aurora is experiencing, and, and I think those are three very important areas. And I do apologize for my voice, I had a little laryngitis, which for much of the world was a wonderful blessing, but it is coming, my voice is coming back.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks for being here, Tyne, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
We have, as you know, an 11-member legislative body, so what is your strong skill or attribute that you would bring to the council to help us become even more effective and cohesive than we are now?
Well, I'm a team player. I like, well, I usually play pretty well in the sandbox, I have to tell you, probably a couple of times I haven't, so let me be honest with you, but I understand the process. There's a decorum to the process. I understand that there are rules and guidelines, and that there's a set of rules for council members, there's a set of rules for the mayor, I understand we have a city manager model, and I think one strength I would bring would be able to bring wisdom and perspective from a long-term position in my experience in the legislature and in the local community, but I would be able to do that with the decorum of rules and the respect for the rules.
Councilmember Hunter Holand.
Hi, Debbie, thanks for being here. Is there anything in your past that if publicly disclosed would be an embarrassment to yourself or to the city?
Probably anything that can be disclosed about me is out there, and so I don't think there would be any secrets. If you want to go do a quick search, I'm sure you'll find, anything you want to know about me is out there. I have nothing I'm ashamed of and nothing I'm hiding and, and I'm having no affairs. So how's that? Glad you're taping this, that ought to be great.
Really boring for the press. We've got news about the presses here.
My husband's glad I said that, though.
Councilmember Legere.
Debbie, I'd like to ask you, if appointed, would you be able to distinguish between your strongly held personal beliefs and the desires of the citizens and the residents of the city if those two, you know, were in conflict? You know, say something you strongly believed in, you know, was in conflict with what might be best for the residents of the city?
I think my answer would be yes, and I'll give you a couple of examples, and I understand an at-large position certainly is in the position of having to be able to hear the citizens all across Aurora. I do have certain beliefs, and I have been in a position before where I've been able to vote my belief, and if my belief was not the vote that prevailed, then I supported the belief that prevailed. If, in fact, there was a general decision that was to be made, and that decision was in the best interest of Aurora, then the best interest of the city would have to trump my personal belief, unless you're asking me to sacrifice one of my grandkids, and then that's, I draw that line. But, but let me tell you one more thing that would be an important value for me. Sometimes decisions are made by council, and I may or may not agree with a decision, but I believe that once a decision has been made by the whole, then I believe the responsibility of a member of city council is to get behind that decision, to work that decision, and to support that decision. And so I think I understand when you have to change your hat, and when you can be in one place, and then when you need to be supportive, when it's time to come together and be a cohesive unit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Markert.
Thanks, you referenced the role of at-large, and I think you know informally, as a council, us ward people tend to be pretty parochial about our wards, and the mayor's off-cutting ribbons and being ceremonial, and at, and at-large member has a different role. What would you pick up as your issues, projects, priorities, what would you pick up to carry as your weight, if you will, of the issues on the city? What would you champion?
Well, I'd probably want to do some research before I tell you my answer is all-inclusive, but let me tell you, here's where I would first go. In days gone by, I served on the blue ribbon panel that Aurora had when we were able to actually build a bridge between local nonprofit entities that provided services to the citizens. As time has gone on, certainly those funds have diminished, as we've had to do, make some adjustments with the budget. But here's what I believe. I believe that public-private partnerships add nothing but strength to a community. One of the things I would see as an at-large member would be to go out and continue to build strong relationships with those local nonprofits and those local entities that support the citizens of Aurora, that would support the mission of this city to move forward as an all-American city, and make sure that the disenfranchised and those who need an extra little bit of a hand up could have that direct guidance in a partnership with the city. And, and I would like to see that strengthened. But let me tell you something else I've learned in the hierarchy of government. In the hierarchy of government, I've learned that you have to respect the place you're in, and I can respect that an at-large council member would first respect the ward member, and it would not want to step in and cross a line without going to that ward member and saying, Mr. so-and-so has made contact with me, and I'm wondering if we could talk about this, and maybe that ward member would already say, I'm dealing with this, or I have a good answer, or maybe I could say, could I work with you? Could we make something happen to address this concern? So I think that an at-large member has a responsibility to respect the position of the ward members, as well as to love and embrace the city and be creative and independent in that process.
Thanks.
It's related to that, but give you an opportunity to say a little bit more. If you were appointed, do you have a particular area of expertise that you would like to bring to this council? You know, we, we all have areas that we work in, we all have committee assignments, and we all have a background, and, but certain council members tend to take the lead in certain areas based on all that combination of what's there. What would you be interested in?
Well, I'm interested in many things, but I have skill and training and expertise in disaster response, I have skill and training and expertise in child welfare issues, I have skilled training and expertise in animal welfare and some of the issues that pertain to those areas. I'm also really concerned about our youth and making sure that we are looking to future issues. So I think I have a lot of judiciary experience as well in working with the jails and so forth. So I know in many of those areas, they touch this council, and I would be happy to fill a need, but I would also be happy to champion any one of those areas. And I guess I would add this. I understand that if Aurora were ever to move down the path of, of being a county, a city and a county, and I understand that's not necessarily what things look like today, but down the road, if that kind of a direction were to take place, I bring a lot of skill and expertise in a lot of areas that a county would even have to consider, such as the child welfare piece, which right now isn't necessarily a responsibility of this council, but it certainly would be something in the projected future, that I also understand a great deal about public policy and assistance there. So I think that I could be very timely and very current, and I think I could be forward-thinking should we ever move in that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Roth.
You know, if you're appointed to this vacancy, it's just for the balance of the term, so this would only go till 2013, November of 2013. If you were appointed to this vacancy, what would be your intentions for 2013?
If I had the privilege of being appointed and I was able to serve this city, I would run for reelection. I would not want to step into something as a plugging a dike or being a Band-Aid without an opportunity to be part of the structure in the future.
Councilmember Burson's.
Thank you. Well, Debbie, as you know, we just went through an election cycle for council and mayoral candidates, and during that, we heard, actually from some of the people interviewing here tonight, tell us their likes and their, on the flip side, their criticisms of council's recent actions on economic development and trying to bring jobs to Aurora. So as the Chair of Planning Economic Development and Redevelopment Policy Committee, the appointee will be replacing Bob Fitzgerald's seat on that policy committee. Now, can you tell us how you, as a new council member on that policy committee, would help lead us to bring in jobs in development and redevelopment? You know, what ideas would you bring?
Well, one of the things that would be important to me would be to find a bridge in partnerships between state and federal monies, state and federal opportunities, such as through the Department of Local Affairs. When the Hurricane Katrina and Rita evacuees were brought out to Lowry, I was a part of the Aurora group that responded and volunteered there, and then I went on to receive a brief contract with the Department of Local Affairs. And I think I learned more about how we worked with Aurora by being in that position and understanding the funding opportunities that are there, the opportunities to help advancement of business such as asbestos abatement, and looking at older properties that perhaps could be redeveloped and renovated to incentivize future opportunities. So I think that I would bring a strong relationship and creative ideas in bridging those opportunities and advancing some of those relationships with other government entities, as well as private business and in the private sector. When I grew up, my father had his own company, and he was in San Francisco on the wharf, and we, we all had to work our tails off helping our dad, and I won't tell you exactly how, because he had his own electrical company, and he supplied all the lights in the city, and he used to joke that it would be 50 cents a globe if we could break them so that they'd have to reorder, but we didn't do that. And so, but, but I really believe there are really creative public-private opportunities that could be advanced, and let me tell you, I'm really actually glad you asked that question, because when I did run for mayor, and I actually already knew you'd win when, when I started, but I had to jump in, and congratulations, I'm glad you won, you did a great job. But I also, during that campaign, I actually was in opposition to the Gaylord project, and, but I was in opposition to it because I was concerned about the incentives, and I was concerned about the delay, or the, the lack of what I felt like was more information to the citizens. But I understand city council moved that forward, and I know that project is going forward, and one of the things that I would really believe is coming in as an at-large member would be to get behind that project and do everything possible in order to make that advance. And I will have to tell you, some of you know I, I do therapy, and I had somebody say that they were looking at the possibility of getting a job there, and I thought, that's great, I knew that, I know that I can wear some egg on my face, too, and so I hope that, I hope some good people find jobs out of that deal.
Thank you, I appreciate your honesty on that. Thanks.
Probably to a fault, I'll tell you where I'm at.
Yes, Councilmember Hunter Holand, please.
Debbie, could you please describe what benefits and advantages to the city would result from you being a member of City Council?
I love people. I love Aurora. I would do everything in my power to help the citizens that I would encounter to feel heard, and to feel that their ideas were at least worth hearing and listening to. I think that- I think that, I think I would bring a niche in because I've helped in growth. I was brought into a church that started, that when I got there, had about 900 people. And I was with them until about 10,000 people. And I was one of the developers of many of the programs that got them to that place. I was not the only one. I was only one little piece of a puzzle. But I understand the work that it takes to reach out to diverse groups of people with varied and differing opinions, even difficult people, and trying to maintain a level head, trying to be able to take criticism, and trying to be able to still make decisions that are best for the overall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Markert.
Thanks. I know your resume was thorough, but tell us a little bit about your current commitments and business obligations and whether that would permit you to dedicate the considerable editorial, considerable amount of time necessary to perform your duties as an at-large member of council, including evening meetings and functions on weekends.
That's a really good question because right now, four of my evenings a week are tied up, and I already had to make the decision I would be willing to vacate at least a couple of those evenings and adjust if I need to. And so for me, it would be pulling back from a bit of what I do, but that's okay for me. I've been doing what I do for 19 years. When I served in the legislature, I saw clients, and I knew I had to get my bases covered when I couldn't see them. And so being here tonight, I made other plans, and I'll be back with you next week. And I'm doing your invocation. Should I come out and pray that you consider me? No, never mind. Well, anyway, that's not the plan. I was already, I was... Yes. May you all reflect on my answers from last week. I would bring humor to council, if that matters to you. Lighten it up a little bit. But I'm willing, actually, to make those adjustments as needed. And I do understand there would be commitments. I've done it in the past. I understand that.
Thank you.
You made a comment earlier, and again, it's just an opportunity for you to expand upon it. Talk about your understanding of how this Aurora government works with council, with the mayor, with the appointees, including the manager, the city attorney, and so on, so forth, and then the general employee work staff. Give us your view of how you think that works.
As I best understand it, we have a city manager model. And I think we have a great city manager. And we have broken down, we have an administrative breakdown, we have major departments that break down the management of almost 2,700 staff members, if I recall correctly. It's my understanding that the, all the department heads technically answer to the city manager, and that when there are problems or concerns, that you would go to the city manager. I'm sorry to minimize nor negate the role of mayor, but I certainly knew when I ran as mayor, I used to believe that the role of the mayor was kind of being icing on the cake and making everything else look good. And you're doing a great job with that. And I'm sure it's much more involved than that. But I believe in the city manager model. I believe that the role of city council is to create the policy, to direct how the policy, where that policy needs to go, and make sure that the city manager and those who are under his authority implement the policies, the rules, and the regulations that have been invoked by city council.
Bob Legere.
Debbie, I just wanted to expand on the question I asked about strongly-held personal beliefs and potential conflicts. A lot of the very important issue, issues you've talked about that are very important to you are programs and things that are generally county-related, county and state-related. And I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about how that would fit in with the municipal role of a city council member where we are really not in the realm of social services. So can you talk about that a little?
Well, and I think I did clarify that when I stated if we were to look in the future, that would certainly be a strength that I would bring to the table. But when we're at the municipal level, I do understand the separation and the difference between county and between the city. And I believe that the values and the strengths that I would bring would be able to help advance the opportunities for the citizens in Aurora to truly feel grounded and connected with their city, as well as opportunities to engage the citizens to bring a voice back into council in a way that they would have another set of ears that would be out there listening and being able to bring those, their ideas back in and being able to go back out and perhaps address concerns that some of the citizens may have when they don't understand decisions of council or they don't understand some of the responsibilities that council is required to utilize in their role here, serving the city. So I believe that bringing it to the municipal level, I still believe my skill set is absolutely policy-oriented, people-oriented, and problem-solving oriented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? No. You still have a couple of minutes left. If there's anything you'd like to let us know in a closing, it's up to you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. And I understand you're in a difficult situation because every single, I saw the list of names. Every single person that has come before you is incredible. And every single person would do an incredible job. I'm just going to ask you to follow your heart, because I love this city. I don't want to pressure anybody. I just want you to do in your heart what you believe is right for Aurora. That's what I want to do. I want to do what I believe is right for Aurora. And I believe that I would truly bring a great balance and a great opportunity to this group of people. You all do a great job. I think part of the role of a council member is to respect those that they work with. And part of what I would want to bring is a level of honor, a level of respect, and a level of decorum, as well as great pride in Aurora. And that's what I'd bring to the table. And no matter where we move in the future, I love Aurora.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We are, of course, being taped. So if you could make sure your answers are into the microphone, that would be great. You may have noticed we're missing some council members.
Yes.
Of course, we have the vacancy. Bob Broome is not going to be here on the second and chose not to participate. And then council members Peterson and Cleland had some last-minute personal things that came up, and they couldn't be here. But, of course, because it's being taped, it'll be on Channel 8, it'll be on YouTube, so on, so forth. So everybody will have a chance to follow up.
Okay.
What we're going to do is take about a half an hour, more or less, give you an opportunity for an opening, ask you some questions, and then give you an opportunity for a closing.
All right.
So that's kind of where it is. And we'll go. It's all yours.
Oh, good evening. Many of you know I'm Deb Wallace, and I'm hoping to receive your selection for the at-large position. My background, which you've read my resume, you had opportunity to go over that. But I think most important of everything is that my commitment from being in Aurora for 30 years, with the commitment to continue to work with the city and the city council as a whole to improve our standing and our environment. We love, we live, I love to live, work, and just enjoy ourselves in Aurora and make it a destination city. So I like to be counter with the members and to help. As at-large, I would find it would be an opportunity to help those that represent the wards, to help them to commit whatever jobs that they have. And if they don't have the time, to work with them, to build a better relationship.
Good. You're right. We have your resume. But tell us in your own words what you think you've personally done to participate in and make Aurora a better community.
Well, I've been, I'm a member of the Aurora, the Civil Service Commission. I've stayed involved with mainly two schools. One would be Aurora Quest, and the other one, which is my granddaughter, I used to be with Aurora Hills. Now she's over at Falcon Creek, so I'll be volunteering there. I've been a member, an active member of Northwest Aurora Neighborhood Organization, better known as NANO to many people, since I've lived in that area for quite a while. And I volunteer and help out whatever Original Aurora Renewal has a need for anything. They know they can always count on me to help in that area. And I'm a head area coordinator for Neighborhood Watch. And that has gotten me out to really visit the neighborhood and talk to, to find out what's going on and be actually as a resource to people, not just from my experience on council, but just being active with Neighborhood Watch and Original Aurora Renewal. I've been able to give people information to help them in their daily lives when they need aid.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Being here tonight and all your years of serving the city, you don't stop, and we appreciate everything you've done. As you know, we're an 11-member legislative body. So what would be your certain strengths, skills, or attributes that you would bring that would make us more cohesive and work more efficiently together, more productive?
Well, one, I respect the fact that we have six wards, and we have six council members. And being an at-large person, I would work very closely in the sense if I would get a phone call or issue that would come to me, I would reach out to that ward council member to make sure that they're aware of the situation. And if they wanted me to handle it or whatever, I'd be willing, I'd be wanting to do that. That's one of the things I would do. The other is, my strength, I'm open for communication. I like to learn. There's so many departments and committees and different things that we have within the city. If it's something, especially planning, I will call and ask questions. And sometime I'll go back to the basic questions to find out what's really going on, where did it start, and what, to get the knowledge. So that's one of the things that I do. And I think that has a lot to do with it. And I believe the only way we can do anything together has to be together and to be on an equal keel.
Councilmember Legere.
Devin, and these questions are the same for everybody.
Okay.
So they're not, don't let it throw you off.
All right.
If it's not applicable. But if appointed, would you be able to distinguish between any strongly-held personal beliefs you have, where they might be in conflict with the needs and desires of the Aurora city?
Oh, definitely. Just in everyday dealing, well, being on the commission. That's one of the first examples, I think, that comes to mind, is that you know what, I know what I would like or what I prefer to see. But what's best for the city of Aurora? What is the best, and that's the bottom line, no matter what I feel on the issue, is what is best for the employees and the, most importantly, residents of Aurora. So I would look at both ends. I would have to be open for that.
Councilmember Roth.
Again, Debbie, thank you for being here. You know, this is, if appointed, this is just for the balance of the term.
Yes.
So it's just through 2013. So come, well, several months before November 2013, what would be your intention if you got this appointment beyond the appointment time?
Beyond that, if I would get this appointment, would be to run. It would be to run at-large.
Councilmember Hunter Holan.
Hi, Debbie. Thanks for being here. Is there anything in your past that if publicly disclosed would be an embarrassment to yourself or the city?
No, I don't believe so. Well, as the president, I'm a Raven fan, so. But I'm willing to switch to the Broncos now that Manning is here, but that may be.
Well, thank you for that.
We appreciate honesty.
I don't know. I've heard, "Once a Raven, always a Raven."
That's true.
Councilmember Burson.
Thanks. Well, Deb, as you know, we just went through council-mayoral election cycle. And some of the people that we interviewed here tonight actually ran. And they told us their likes and gave some criticisms of what council has done recently to bring in jobs for economic development. And as chair of the, well, you know, PEDR.
Yes.
I don't say all those words.
Yes.
Okay. As chair of the PEDR, I wanted you to know that whoever fills this council seat will go on that committee, taking Bob Fitzgerald's spot because he had a seat on that committee. So how do you feel like you could lead us, lead the city on that committee on planning and economic development and redevelopment? You know, what could you bring? What ideas could you bring?
Well, one thing, it's not an idea, but just the fact of being open and realizing that what we see a lot of times, especially, I'll say, is redevelopment. For the most part, people don't like to change. It's hard to make changes. And at times, they're necessary for survival. And by doing that, you want to look at the long picture. Not what's affecting Aurora in the next five years, but what's going to affect Aurora in the next 20 to 40 years and then beyond. So I would be, I would have to be open and would be open to listen to the different projects that are coming up and what's that, the present council has taken and whatever direction that it's going into. And as far as new development coming in, I'm welcoming new development in. But keep in mind, we don't want it to be at the cost of quality of life for the citizens and making it difficult. So that's another big issue that I think, I mean, I believe in new growth, new businesses coming in the area. But we all need to work together. And we don't want to give away the bank in a sense, but we still want to be a balanced area and not that we're not zero in the bank account.
Good. Thank you.
Certainly, you've served before.
Yes.
On council. But again, this is one of those questions we're asking everybody. So tell us your view and your understanding of the relationship among council, the mayor, the appointees, and the general workforce of the employees for the city. How's it all supposed to work?
Well, the mayor and the city council are supposed to work closely. And we hope to be on the same playing field or in a balanced environment. With the four appointees, council has more duties or opportunities, I would say, when you're dealing with the four appointees, be it the city attorney with Charlie Richardson or Zelda with the detention, then Chief Oaks, and then Chief Garcia. But then you're thinking, when you look at the staff, the employees for the city of Aurora, they report to the city manager. And the city manager has, he's over that. And sometime, I know in the past, it's a little confusion at times because as city council member, you feel like, well, I have a problem. I want to go straight to the source. But we have to realize and respect the fact that we do have a city manager. And the issue has to go, at least make sure that the mayor's aware of whatever the concern is, and then talk to the city manager. So that's the hierarchy that I feel we have to do.
Thank you. Yes, Derry.
Please describe what benefits and advantages to the city would result from you being a member of city council.
Well, the advantages, in the past, I've made acquaintance of quite a few people in the business area. I have some knowledge of the way different departments run and who head certain departments. It would be, I would continue on. I have a foothold and an understanding, a foundation to build upon. I will call and ask someone to come to me, or I'll go to them, whatever's comfortable, to find out something. An example I can give you is on East Colfax, when they do the redevelopment of the storefronts, the color code, the color combination that they use. As a female, I think looking in my eyes, it was hideous. And to make a small business owner who want to redo their business, to bring it up to time, but to constrict them into certain colors that really didn't go with anything that they had, I thought that was just a little bit too much. And to find out, when did we got these standards, how do we go about changing them? And I went through all that, and just talking to staff and finding out. And, President, come to excuse me, but it was the men previously that picked those colors, and not realizing we have a different eye on some of them, and really what's valuable to the small business. Because if you can, a customer can walk up and say, oh, I like the way that store looks, you'll go in. But if it's something mismatched, you have a tendency to look at and say, what were they thinking? So that, I will go to that extent.
Thank you.
Those colorblind men thinking.
It was pretty awful.
Councilmember Markert.
Thanks, and you know, too, we're asking this of everyone, and it's special for you, because I think you know best, as a ward person, we tend to get kind of parochial about our areas. This is an at-large position, and the mayor has a role to play, and at-large has a role to play. What would you choose as your issue areas, or what would come naturally to you to kind of carry your weight for the whole city on council as an at-large member?
At-large, one would be public safety. The public safety, be it fire or police, well, in fact, no matter what ward you live in, it plays a big part in. And another one is, the one little department that we have is code, code enforcement. I know we have to deal with that, and we know some areas have covenants and some don't, and what applies and what doesn't. That would be an area.
Thanks, good.
Councilmember Roth.
Deborah, what do you see as the three most important issues that are currently facing the city?
I think one definitely would be, which was discussed Monday night, the water and our use of our water supply that we have, and I think with the Prairie Water Project, which is complete. And we're talking about helping other areas in the metro area with their long-range plan as far as drought in the next 50, next 20 to 50 years. We need to be mindful that we don't sell out or give too much away too soon. We really need to plan on the growth of Aurora. Aurora is a growing. I mean, if you look in the last 10, 15 years, how far south we go. I mean, 15 years ago, Southland wasn't there, you know? And so you look and you see how we're growing, that we need to make sure no matter what, if we have a wet season like this month, March is dry. Is this going to be like we had a couple summers ago? Will we have enough water? And that's one of the big issues, is really maintaining that the city of Aurora and its residents, the taxpayers, have a well supply of water, and we don't have to look for our children and grandchildren down the line. The next would be to work, continue work with, I say, public safety, but the Aurora Police and all, to continue to have diversity, to have our city council, our employees, whatever position, to really reflect the population.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Markert.
So tell us what you're doing in terms of current commitments or business obligations, and whether that would permit you to dedicate the considerable amount of time necessary to perform the duties as an at-large council member, including evening meetings and activities on weekends?
Well, outside of right now, the commitment formal is with the Civil Service Commission. And if I were to be appointed, I know I would have to step down, so that would free up some time. Other than that, I have, I volunteer with my kids, as I say, in schools. I still can do that. As far as Neighborhood Watch, being a head area coordinator, we have quite a few citizens that are qualified and are willing to step up to the plate, at least four, that I do know residents that would be willing to step up to the plate. As far as family commitment, my husband works a rotating, he's all 412, swings are days, and we are used to passing each other. Or we leave notes and we know how to call one another. So it doesn't make, so my time will really be free to do that. As far as vacations this year, we don't have any formal vacation coming up. We just have the 28th through the 30th of June, he's having a family reunion here, and that'll cover the weekend, so the evening, and that would be free to do.
Thanks.
And I'm in relatively good health, so my knees are working. My knees are working.
This is great.
Good, that's a good thing. Are there other questions? You have time for closing, whatever you'd like to leave with us, please do.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for selecting me for the interview, the process. I just want to let you know that I will give 110 or whatever time that I need to give and be willing to work for, as the ward council members, I just want to know that I would be there to support you and help whenever area that I can. And that's where I, I just love to be able to help, and one thing to make, work together to help Aurora. We know it's the third largest, and it's a destination city, but just to work more to bring it as the third largest, but number one on people's mind. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.